We're going to go ahead and get started and welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. We're going to ask everyone to speak up, we'll pass the mic around that will help us for everyone here. So, welcome everyone. I'm going to read the names of the board members and the answer here. Trying to determine if we have the board we do. Anyway, Nancy Baker.
Here.
Ronnie Beal, Ronnie's not here, but his proxy, oh, that's his proxy. Carl Platten. Carl, can you hear us?
Here.
Larry Cox.
Here.
Casey Cooper.
Here.
Carolyn Cowler.
Here.
Joyce Edmonds.
Here.
Maggie Falter.
Here.
I'm here.
Vicki Green.
Here.
Jim Peck.
Judy Johansson.
Here.
Michael Latner.
Here.
Pat Guinness, after her proxy. Marc Pittman. Judy Poe. Andy Stone. Duncan Sumter.
Here.
Ed Dropleton.
Here.
And Charles Fines. Okay, we got four of them. Oh, I'm sorry, do. Okay, the next item is public comment. Do you have anyone on the public comment?
Yes.
Okay, there's no mic at the podium, but I'm pretty loud, right?
What happened?
All right, I can stand over by the phone, does that help? It doesn't. Seriously? Hello, I'm Mary Short and I live in Alexander County and that is my daughter Katie sitting over there in the public seating section. And I have been coming to the board meetings for quite a while now. So, I have two items for this board meeting. I am a parent of an adult with an intellectual and developmental disability. Katie is 34. And we go to Raleigh quite a bit. And this past month has been really interesting because there's a subcommittee of the Health and Human Services Committee that was supposed to be about public guardianship. And through the course of that subcommittee, it became clear that there was an attack on parent relative guardians and the obvious conflict of interest that we have. So, you all can think about what that might be because the parents are having a hard time understanding the conflict, whatever. But as part of us going to and from Raleigh, I was given some information by another family about a new IRS letter and guidance. And in this IRS guidance, it talks about the fact that these C waiver services, home and community based services, are now foster placements and we, living with providers, are now tax exempt. So, the fun part of this IRS guidance is it's effective January of 2014. So, I told a bunch of my parents, and I have an email list for about 200 families, but they're getting some pushback from the providers on it. So, I think eventually we'll get it all straightened out. But maybe Mr. Sumter, did I see your last name wrong? But maybe that group will have some information about this new IRS ruling and the tax exempt status. But the other thing I found out and what I wanted to ask the board about is there apparently is some sort of, I don't know what to call it, alliance of benchmarks, the North Carolina Council on Developmental Disabilities and a group called the National Alliance for Direct Support Professionals. And apparently on April 29th, at the Lew Ridge Assembly, Smoky Mountain Center is somehow participating with benchmarks, the DDC Council and this Alliance for Direct Support Professionals in order to create a chapter of this National Alliance for Direct Support Professionals. And so, I just wanted to know if the board was going to be giving any information about that. And as a family member, my concern about this National Alliance for Direct Support Professionals is one of their stated goals is to increase the wages paid to direct support professionals. And so, I'm guessing that this is all going to be some sort of effort to get a fee increase. And so, as members of this board, I would think maybe you might be a little concerned about fee increases and direct support professional wages, but the fee increase that comes with it and how if there's a fee that is, that's money that's not going to be able to be used to get anybody off your registry of unmet needs. So, I'm a little surprised that there's some sort of alliance between Smoky and the DDC Council or the benchmarks and this organization. Because I'm still, again, this month, as I have been every month, concerned about the number of individuals on the registry of unmet needs. And, oh, by the way, where do they keep dropping off to? There's reports that are issued about the number of people on the registry of unmet needs and it's dropped by like 200 or 300 people over the last month, two months. Where are they going? Because you don't have new spots. Anyway, I'm done. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you again. Thanks for your service to the union. You know, dealing with school children, one of the things I find is parents go in and they ask for services and they'll work on it for months, two months, a year, year and a half and then, and all of a sudden, they call me a year and a half later and they say, "I can't get anywhere." Well, I find out that these parents are very astute in what they're doing. They're asking the right question. They're asking the right people. They're doing the right thing in regards to what they're asking. Except, they didn't put it in writing and they don't understand that an alphabet system and all the stuff that goes with it. So, they don't get their needs met with their child because they can't articulate what we're finding right here with this committee. And that is that, you know, you've got to know the language. If you don't know the language, you're out. So, here's some concerns that I have, and I think they're big ones. I followed this MCO stuff with LME and all this for 26 years. It's always been person centered, talking about person centered. What is person centered? It shouldn't be about the person you're giving services to. What does that person need? And how can they articulate it to get those needs? Well, there's some things that I feel that's standing in the way. Number one, I think the law of North Carolina is standing in the way. Because they articulate the law as being a choice driven operation for parents or children or adults to have a choice. So, what is the law and everything providing for us today? It's a taking choices away, not giving the choices. Providers are dwindling and we're going to be offering two providers or three providers or so like that. So, it's really coming down to not a choice, but this is all you get. Let me give you an example. I've got three people that I'm helping right now that needs medical help. Medical help. To find out what's going on. Have you ever saw that when you see a kid's diagnosis, every one of them's got ADHD on the same body? Do you really believe that this is a true diagnosis? I don't. This is a way to get you in the door. What's the root cause of ADHD? I guarantee you, I'm not a doctor, but you can go back and you'll find it's a medical reason. It's something medical. Then what happens? It throws them into the psychiatric environment. What happens then? They never get out of psychiatric diagnosis. You never see the medical or you never see the kid get their needs met because they're stuck in the psychiatric environment. That's where everybody is falling in now is the psychiatric diagnosis. My concern is the individual, do they really have a choice? Because what I've found with these three clients, they did not want, and I've talked to folks here, they did not want to come through the MCO to get services, but in order to get services, they have to come through the MCO. But in order to get in the MCO, you've got to fill out all this paperwork and then what do you find out? You don't really have a choice. You only be plugged into what they got and if it don't fit, I'm sorry, it comes back right to the community. And you think about the people in the Triangle Park area and some big areas like that, that's really got some really expertise in things and you can't even get a second opinion because you can't get nobody down there to open the door. Because they don't want to do business with the MCO. How about that? Did I do all right on my estimation? If I didn't, we'll bring it back next time. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Catherine Ryder. I'm the parent of a young adult on the Innovations Waiver, former case manager, community advocate, taking after Jared. And I like to put a face to people with problems. So, today I'm going to talk about my kid. Thomas is 26. He lives in an unlicensed AFL. He's the only person in this group home. The problem is, and he's been there three years, he's pretty happy there, is that the service provider agency is going out of business. It's a small agency, parent owns. That woman knows my life, but she can't keep up with the paperwork that the MCOs require and afford to stay in business. So, I have to look for a new provider for my kid. I've got to tell you, I'm having a really hard time because of the issue of liability. Thomas comes with lots of really cool toys. He's got chainsaws, he's got lawn hores, he's got weed whippers, he's got trailers, you name it, he's got toys. When I start explaining what Thomas needs, I'm not getting a good response because the issue of liability. Hopefully, I'll work my way down your list and I've got a few months because my provider's giving me notice. This is tricky, okay? Here's a perfect story of Thomas's mindset. He calls me up, "Mom, I need Jerry's phone number. I found a vending machine. I want to call him, I want to retrofit it and dispense beer." Now, he doesn't drink beer. I said, "Where are you going to sell this stuff?" He said, "I don't know, but I'm going to make lots of money." Unfortunately, or fortunately, Jerry helped him and it didn't work. Okay, so that's the first issue is finding provider choice with a complicated kid. The second one has got to do with his authorizations. Thomas's dad died and so Thomas is considered an adult disabled child. He has a large deductible. Every month, he's got to meet that deductible before his services on the waiver can begin. His plan didn't get in until the 12th of this month because the DSS worker who keys the deductible quit and nobody caught that. So, we're leaving phone messages and the machines taking the messages. His plan went in late. So, there are six more days, which means his plan can be looked at through the 26th of this month. Then, as if every other year, I'm assuming it's going to be, it's typical for the UM people to say, "Give us more information. Tell us why Thomas should be doing community networking." That's usually the issue. So, on the 26th is the last day, I get five days to provide the information, UM gets five days to review it. That takes us into April and he's lost his services. I can't emphasize how stressful it is to try to be a responsible user of services and have something like this, the connection between DSS and Smoky not work. Anyway, those are my two comments for today.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call on our Director Brian to introduce our case.
Okay. If anybody is having any doubt about the metamorphosis that this organization has undergone in the last couple of years especially, we'll have a real opportunity to reflect on what we've become. We talked a little bit about our new senior director of provider network. We recruit nationally. We use headhunters to do that. We're very selective about key position, selective about all of our positions, but in particular, given the requirements of our business now, you know, we look for folks with a skill set that is not readily available and often is not available in North Carolina. We're very fortunate to find this guy in Wisconsin. I don't know if he's here for the weather, because he's for a great organization or both, but, you know, somebody who's worked in the managed care industry for decades and has a really unique background, very, very happy to have him, Sean Jones. Johnny, want to stand up?
Hello, everyone. I want to see a round of applause.
Yeah, I know Christina is a lot more familiar, has his resume there and just gives you some idea of the background this gentleman has.
Good afternoon, everyone. I think one of the things that always stands out to me about Sean's resume, which is a little different than what Brian just said, is he was a special agent for the FBI. So, there you go. So, you know, we've got to be very, very careful. And we're on, and one night I'm in the building with him and he sets off the alarm and it's just me, Sean in the building and I'm like, he said, you know, he's wearing a coat and I'm like, he says, "But you know, I've been to the FBI and I've got all this high quality clearance of the government." And I'm like, "I believe I can give you this coat. I believe I can trust it." So, then he came to get out of the building and I'm sitting there walking with him, this is the hottest thing. But we are very, very glad you're here. But like Brian said, Sean comes with tremendous amount of experience. He has just stepped up to the plate, started the first march, trying to get to know all of us. Comes with the experience, the great thing that I've already seen in Sean is that his background with managed care, working with providers, understanding dollars, asking questions, he transfers that knowledge very quickly into the Smoky world and the North Carolina world. And that is just a real asset for us. As you know, being in this position has been thanks for quite some time and I do believe that they're not here, Donald Rose and Patty Wilson have been carrying this department for quite some time. We are very, very excited to have him. So, we welcome Sean soon.
Thank you. Go home. The next item we have on the agenda is review and approval of the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? If so, is there a motion to approve our agenda? We praise the man or where's something, a choice. Is there a second? Got two seconds. Vicki Green, a second. All in favor of the agenda, say aye. Next item is clarification of actions taken at the February 21st meeting, board meeting. I'll call on Jake Howard for a turn.
Good afternoon, everybody. We have a small matter to take care of. It's actually a very large matter, Brian, but in the rush to get everything done at our last meeting, we failed to go back into an open session after our closed session and announce that we had signed a contract with Brian Ingram to be employed as our CEO. This small matter was pointed out through my chat, Brian, and I said, "I'll follow my sword," because I intended to go back into closed session and just forgot about it. So, Brian has agreed to work these past several weeks whether he had a contract or not. So, I think a motion would be in order, Mr. Chair, to employ Mr. Brian Ingram, pursue the terms of contract, which were very capably explained to us by Nancy Ford in our closed session.
Okay, we got a motion by Michael Atherton, second by Larry Cox. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
My pleasure, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is review and approval of the prior meeting minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there a motion to approve? Mr. Trump made a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second? Second. Nancy? All in favor, say aye. All right. Conflict of interest disclosure, press day.
We've already received the vast majority of the conflict of interest disclosure forms from all of you. Thank you very much. If you have not turned that form in, please turn that in before you leave today. There are no conflict of interest that have been disclosed in this form, so there's nothing to report today. Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is Consumer and Family Advisory Committee report. Pat Guinness is at another meeting, our CPAC chair, but Judy Johansson's going to give us a report.
Thank you. I'm just going to read from Pat's.
If you can tell, this is the first time we've done this with the microphones and all of that, so.
I'm not so sure. I don't think I'd ever use a microphone. First time, I think. Anyway, I'm just going to read what Pat wrote down a little bit. She says that we are very excited to be here, the three of us, which we are. I'm really excited to be part of what Christina called an historical moment and happy to be here, so thank you. She mentions that the Syrian committee met on March 10th and our individual regions will meet as scheduled, all four of them, and there are dates there. That we continue to be involved in QI committees, cross-social teams, local operations, community education and health literacy, service management, wider network council, crisis and emergency, budget meetings, human rights committees, health committees that were involved in. She said several of our members are attending the state meeting in Gastonia on day 16 and any board members that are interested in going are welcome to our company. They're also attending various upcoming Congresses of Disability Rights in North Carolina Conference in Hayfield in Jacksonville. Again, anyone interested. There's a guardianship conference in Asheville in May.
Judy Little, aren't you here yet?
Oh, sorry. Is that better? Okay. The next, North Carolina Guardianship Conference is in Asheville in May. NAMI and North Carolina's Health Consumers' Hall conferences are also. She mentions that two members served on the Cross Disability State Elder Engagement Group Initiative for six months, where they gave input about outcomes and expectations for managed services and support and what that would need to look like. And we have a report, CPAC has a report going back to any, if anyone's interested in that. And that's it. Thank you.
Our next board, the Duncan Sumter Provider Advisory Council report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to echo from the Provider Council what Judy said about the CPAC committee that we are very appreciative to be a part of this council, this board. There's not a whole lot to report in terms of link, but there is a lot to report in terms of depth. And probably the primary thing that I would like to report from the council, Network Council, is that over the course of two meetings, both, one was the Smoky Mountain Network Council, there was a discussion about how Smoky interacted with the network providers. And there were a number, a large number of providers who worked with multiple MCOs. And there was a very unanimous decision, not decision, but localization, that Smoky was the most transparent and easiest to work with of all the MCOs, at least from the providers in that room. And I think that says an awful lot, given all the changes and things that are happening across the state with the MCOs. So, I think that's something to celebrate. Another thing is I was invited to represent the council at a strategic meeting from a provider council from another MCO and there were a lot of questions about Smoky's strategic plan with providers. And even though not everybody agreed with the strategic plan, there was still a very clear message that Smoky dealt with their providers in a much different, more transparent, more honest, open way than a lot of other MCOs. And they were not being disrespectful of the MCOs that they worked with by any stretch, but they were very complimentary of Smoky. I think that those are things that we need to celebrate in the midst of a lot of change and transition. From the council's perspective, we met a couple of days ago, the main question that came up, again, there's a lot of change and transitions happening across the state, and the question came up with the partnership, collaborative was, are there timelines? Are there deliverables along the timelines? What happens if this system consolidates? What happens with the bowling? And how does that affect providers and the continuing care for consumers in the mission that we all agreed to, to serve? And so, the real question is, are there timelines and deliverables? And is there a plan if things transition a lot faster or a lot slower than was predicted? So, again, thank you for letting us be a part of this and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. [inaudible]. Judy Poe has a report fighting for Judy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance committee next afternoon at 3:00. Now, if you make a motion to approve the minutes and the financial statements as presented.
Thank you. Judy made the motion. My second, Larry Cox, second. Any questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Any vote? Pat, you have it. All right, the next item is, we'll get behind this.
Good afternoon. I'm going to give a quick financial update on Smoky's financial status as of January 31st. Cash and checking had $53.3 million. That's about two months of operating cash for Smoky Mountain for 83 days of service expense. We have a Medicaid risk reserve that's a little over $5 million. We put 2% of our Medicaid service revenue in the risk reserve every month and will continue to do that until it reaches 15% of our Medicaid budget. Smoky's total assets at the end of January were $67.1 million. Liabilities at the end of January were $27.8 million, with $16.7 million of that being an estimate of Medicaid services that have been provided but not yet claimed to Smoky Mountain. Our overall fund balance excluding the current year is at 8.5% of our current year budget. For our revenues through January, and again, that's for seven months of our fiscal year, we had Medicaid service revenue of $109 million and we had utilized 93% of that for $101 Overall, for all of our funding strength.
Overall, for all of our funding streams and revenue, we have $135.8 million for service. We utilized, again, 93% of our overall service revenue, so we have a 7% surplus at the end of January in services. On the administrative side, we have $18.2 million in revenue, and we utilized 81%, 81% of the administrative dollars. One other financial measure I want to mention is our current ratio for Medicaid. We're required to maintain no less than a 1:1 ratio between our current assets and our current liabilities, and at the end of January, we are at 1.72. So we have a healthy position. There are a lot of financial reports and dashboards in your packet. If you ever have questions or want any help explained, please just catch me before or after the meeting, and I'll be glad to go over it. Thank you.
Let me just chime in here. It's hard just, you know, listening. It's hard just listening to Lisa, especially if you're a newer member of the board, to try to absorb the complexity of our budget, and it is a very complex financial picture and environment that we operate in. For legacy members, you know, we spent quite a bit of time, especially as we went live on the way there, explaining how our capitation works, our rate structure, spent a lot of time looking at service delivery, how that relates to our capitation in particular areas. And that's very helpful grounding. We just, you know, haven't really had the time, you know, to do that yet. We had the retreat and recently some core information that's important for board members to understand in relationship to your fiduciary responsibility. And what we've decided is to, again, for the legacy members, you know, we use this vantage point as an agenda item where, you know, typically we have tried to remind ourselves how important people are in this whole business that we're involved with. And Ben and Paul, Jerry's smiling, and he should be, Jerry, could you help us remember that regularly also? One of the twists we thought we would do with that vantage point would be to talk about our own operations, and I think we can do that in a way that helps educate the board, really be around what we do, and then relate that to clients and families and kind of member services as we might choose to talk about it. So finance would be a really important area to do that soon, to help you give, you know, a little more context to these financial statements that we give. There's a lot to name, so.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a report on the executive committee meeting that was held earlier today. You just mentioned a couple of things. Brian, I want to touch on some of those during his report. We heard before of Western Regional Partnership, the Regional Board Steering Committee, and some of the discussions we consider upon partners. We talked briefly about the Quiddles Foundation assets, and Jay and I are going to contact the attorney for Quiddles and follow up on that matter. And we also discussed briefly the status of the vacant board seat that we have, the Lincoln Insurance position, and also the status of the County Commissioner Advisory Board, which Michael Atherton said. So those were the actions that we got earlier, the executive committee met earlier today at 1:00. Are there any questions about any of those matters? If not, report of the Chief Executive, also Brian.
Western Regional Partnership update, and again, I think this probably leads over into a lot of areas. We get the release of the secretary's Medicaid reform plan, and a lot of information is pretty consistent with what we had expected, and certainly a lot of relationship between that plan and what we've been doing as part of the regional partnership. I guess some of the highlights, in particular, that, you know, pertain to us, again, very consistent with what we've talked about here. On the physical health side, you know, a big commitment to the development of accountable care organizations, which is kind of a service delivery structure that would be used to help to manage care and manage expense in Medicaid for Medicaid-eligible individuals receiving healthcare. It's kind of one part of the equation, and of course, that's a very big part of the equation. For us, you know, we continue on with a very similar mission, you know, doing what we have been doing, which is, you know, a way of thinking about that is a carve-out, where we are managing certain services and benefits for individuals that have the disability areas of mental illness, substance abuse, and intellectual and developmental disabilities. The third area that was talked about in the plan has to do with long-term care services and how those would be managed. Again, a very important subgroup and population that is less involved with our mission. There was some debate about whether or not individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities would be considered part of that group. They are not. So that's a, that's a segment of the plan that I hope and say we would ignore, but there's much less effect on what we do in the healthcare side than, you know, other areas. We'll kind of go a little bit light on that. You know, the notion that accountable care organizations would be created by groupings of physician practices, hospitals, et cetera, is something that's much more evident in Medicare rather than Medicaid. This is something, this is a fairly novel idea to use in the Medicaid system. And Dr. Peck, maybe I should defer to you here with some comments about this. You probably have more expertise than I do with this. There's nothing about that that is inconsistent with the overall vision of, as the secretary likes to say, old person care, integrated care. We do part of that. Accountable care organizations on the healthcare side will do the other part of that. I think the challenge would be in how we would bridge that to create a seamless of delivery system, if you will, for consumers as we would. And that has been a goal, you know, that we have had and a lot of people have had for a long time. You know, how do we get involved? If you take, you know, John Smith, and may have a condition of chronic schizophrenia, you know, we deal with all of his service needs on the mental health side. Well, what about John Smith's needs for primary medical care? Certain screenings that would be, you know, just absolutely crucial for him based on the medications that he receives. There's so many natural connections here. Our ability to put those pieces together is a great challenge, and I think one that is going to bring tremendous benefits for consumers and families. It is just that, you know, we live in a state that has been whipsawed, you know, by so many changes as part of Medicaid reform, or as part of mental health reform, and now Medicaid reform. So how quickly all of these things can be packaged, I guess, is a great question. How this relates, again, more specifically to, and we could just go on and on and on with this, and I'm going to invite, you know, Dr. Peck to make some comments here. With what is contained in this, in this plan, as it relates to the MCOs in particular, you know, very consistent with this notion that 10 will become 4. No dates other than a date for, and trying to respond to your questions, Duncan, and same questions a lot of people have, you know, when is this going to get done? And what does it mean? You know, what are the criteria by which all of this will occur? You know, the plan did not have any of those specifics, and of course, that's one of the challenges we struggle with. You know, we've been given, let's say, an assignment, we have yet not been provided a lot of guidance for the criteria by which these regions would be formed, other than to say, you know, we have a map with colors on it, and we're supposed to get down to four colors rather than 10. And certain criteria around the number of covered lives and general population, that's not a lot to go on. So, there are those challenges. The date that is mentioned in the report is July 1st, 2016, and that is the date by which the final consolidations or mergers, whichever word you'd like to use, would be consummated. What happens between now and then, obviously, there are going to have to be milestones established that will reflect the pace of all the activities that have to occur around that ultimate goal. And for those of you that have been part of Smokey or Western Highlands, you're very familiar with some of those activities. And at the Hayfield, we were in not only establishing those milestones, but talking about our performance and relationship to those, and how those built a path towards that final merger. There's a great deal that has to occur around all of that to define that in a much better So again, as it relates to the partnership, you know, we continue to do all the things we have been doing, largely that is looking at business processes, creating the greatest degree of standardization that makes sense. The idea is not for everything to be identical. It is for there to be the greatest degree of uniformity in things either clinical or business sense. And again, trying to get everybody on the same page, and some of you have heard, you know, my preaching in circles about this before, you know, the state, just the way this evolved was very uneven. There were different start dates, there are different performance levels, there are different degrees of maturity in the MCOs that exist. We have had different information technology that has driven differences that have helped me providers crazy. So there's been a real commitment to making the business processes, again, as standardized as possible. That's just, makes good sense for everyone. It's better for consumers, families, providers, better for us. So the big effort has been around looking at how CenterPoint does business, how Partners does business, how Smokey does business, and, again, in a mirror and a mirror of the way, establishing certain subgroups that looked at those business operations and kind of going through the process of discovery, discussion around, you know, what is the best practice? Do we have a best practice? Should something else be invented? How closely aligned can we all become in the way we do business? Does it make sense for all three of us to even be doing this? And a great example of that is with credentialing, which is a process we do that is essentially checking unlicensed clinicians to make sure they're in good standing, that they're going to be able to do a good job for us, that they're the types of providers that we want to contract with, because we're in charge of the quality, right? Although someone else is delivering the care, it's our responsibility to make sure that those individuals and agencies are going to be delivering high-quality care. So in discussion of the discovery process, it was determined that it really didn't make sense for all three to be doing that. And in fact, a smart plan would be for Smokey to do that and provide that service almost like as a service organization would do, an administrative services organization would do, on behalf of CenterPoint and Partners. So we're on a timeline to do that by July 1st. Likewise with Call Center. Does it, you know, really make sense for all of us to be doing Call Center? Maybe, maybe not. You know, we'll get to that at some point. But in terms of how we can support one another, you know, in a backup plan, it makes a lot of sense for us to do that in a very collaborative manner. That's another area we're looking at. A lot of things to make life better and easier for providers. Do we have to all individually contract? Do we have to all individually do monitoring? Just a lot of kind of low-hanging fruit we're looking at. So all of those activities are ongoing, and we offer a monthly update that talks about those in pretty explicit and descriptive fashion. So all of that's going forward. Discussion about the reform plan, and of course, now is the General Assembly's turn. It was a requirement that the secretary delivered that report, and pretty much knew what was going to be in, and not a lot of surprises there. What's the General Assembly going to think about it? Nothing is going to happen without their say-so and without their support. So, you know, I'm not going to venture a guess, other than to state the obvious. It's a short session, and it's an election year. You know, would the General Assembly be interested in taking on big pieces of controversial business? What do you think? Probably not. You know, Medicaid reform, that's about the biggest thing a state can do when you think about it. It's a $12 billion part of the budget. It's the most vulnerable citizens that we have. It's the healthcare industry, it's the public healthcare industry. That's a, that's a big deal. So what pace that occurs at, you know, you can see the accountable care creation, you know, has a pretty aggressive pace, and I do. You know, how all of this is going to come together, what the General Assembly has to say about that, you know, those are the unknowns now. You know, we're going to continue on our path. I think it's pretty clear that the secretary, he was committed to this plan of regionalization. I think there'll be a lot more discussion about the appropriateness of that plan to accomplish the goals that are really set out in the plan. And we'll see about that. We give Dr. Peck a chance to talk here. Anybody else with that matter? I just know because we have genes to sit and, boy, we get accomplished alive in an hour the other night. Thank you. Go ahead.
I read through that whole Medicaid report, and being an optimist, I believe what the recommendations are was an attempt in a vague way, without a lot of clarity, to state the obvious. And I don't say that in a negative way. I say that actually, I think they had it right. Some of the things they said about mental health and physical health makes a lot of sense. I, for our non-medical people, I have a wonderful illustrative story in my own patient experience. Two patients, this was 15 years ago, Tom and Dave. Tom and Dave had identical films, low-back films, revealing they both had severe spinal stenosis, which is a narrow of the spinal column, which presses on nerves and creates a lot of back pain and leg pain. Tom had a wonderfully supportive family, a great job, a good income, great education, good housing. Dave, on the other hand, was divorced. He was estranged from his kids, couldn't really get his feet back on the ground after being laid off, did not have a good education, although he was as smart as Tom. There are many differences in those individuals. The real interesting thing is, the first person, Tom, actually, I got it mixed up because I, they're fictitious names, because I don't want to buy the tip of it, since Karen Callestone. But Tom, the one with a good family, great job, great education, just finished a marathon. Dave's just a... Dave's just a, and, and it's a reality about the interface between physical and mental health. You've got to have, you've got to have both. You've got to have strong social support. And what I, what I, as I look through this long document, what I see in that is saying, figure out how to do that, LMEs, MCOs. And I think as far as for our region, and I can only think about our region at the time.
I'm not sure I understand.
Sorry, I just, I just got Siri to say something to me. From my understanding is that, that what the challenge for us is, is figuring out how to take these vague ideas and turn them into real action. And, you know, it can't be done, I don't think we have to wait for the legislature to figure it out. In fact, if we do, it won't happen. I think we need to be creative with what we have. We need to partner with, with primary care, hospitals, the CCMC. We have the capacity in Western North Carolina to make this happen. And sometimes you just have to just push forward, being unclear about where you're going and not, not really having it all defined. And I, I'm just, I'm going to challenge Brian and the staff, just really think outside the box. You know, you need experts. You've got a lot of talent in here. I mean, looking over at Casey Cooper, you know, the Cherokee system has an amazing integrated system. It doesn't take long over there to, to be over there to see that integrate in their, in their health record, pharmacy, behavioral health, physical health, social health. They, they tightly manage their referrals, but also have a deep involvement of community members into their, into their decision-making about how resources are spent. They have great data, great data dashboards. We've, we've got a lot of expertise in our community. And as I, as I, you know, looking at the talent in the room, but also I think the talent in our, in the leadership of this organization, we, we can turn this recommendation into, into something positive for our communities. It's just as a matter of pushing forward and being happy with ambiguity and happy with volatility and happy with, with insufficient resources, but just focusing on what the right thing to do for people is. So, I think we can do that.
Perfect. Yeah, we're, we're all for that. We're all for it. And I've really enjoyed getting to know Dr. Heck, just Peter's spirits and I think in terms of public policy and the direction for Smokey, you know, are really under the same page, so great addition to our board. Rate negotiations with DNA. Well, let's see, how quickly can we put people to speak with this detail? I wish there was a simple way to describe, I mean, maybe there is, you know, I like being a reductionist at times and taking, I feel it's really my job to take kind of complicated things and make them simple and boil them down. The other vitally important are, are rate. And when we say our rate, again, this is the amount of money we end up being paid. It's like our premium payment, right? What you pay for your insurance, that's our premium payment. And the, the calculation for that is based on Medicaid eligibility and a handful of different eligibility categories and a certain amount of money we get for each of those categories. And then the multiplier to become the number of individuals each month who are eligible for Medicaid. And the, basically, the period of time, the number of days or months that that individual then is eligible, based on the eligibility category. And I'm happy to see no one has nodded up yet, so I'll keep it short. We're probably headed that way. We do a lot of work. We have, our maturity has gotten tremendous growth around understanding these methodologies. And the important part about that is, how does all of that look? How does that money picture look when it comes to delivering services? And what changes are required based on utilization patterns and money? And it's kind of balancing that utilization pattern and what's in someone's best interest clinically, managing care towards effective results for individuals and living within that budget. So it's a really, really, really important part of, of the business we do. And we have been working with the state on some really unique situations because of our consolidation with Western. It's been, you know, I think a real worthy experience for the state because this hasn't happened before. And for us too, it would be one thing if we were just going along, you know, year after year, and these, and these rates are set each year. And again, it's a very big process. There's actuarial sign-off, CMS has to approve it. It's a, it's a big deal, you know, coming to an agreement about this. And it's one thing to do that kind of year after year where you can see the pattern, where things are going. The state introduces what they call program changes, which can be public policy or changes that exist that are going to affect that rate or membership or something, so you go through all of that. But in our case, you know, it was the addition of the new Western Islands counties and a pre-existing rate. So how does all of that get balanced and then finally consolidated into one rate, which will be kind of our universal rate once we get to July? So, we had our most recent meeting in Raleigh last week. Wow, last week, hard to keep track of the days. Went through that. I think we have some additional information to give back to them. Still working on negotiation in relationship to the expense associated with the Western Islands counties. And, you know, around the figures, that merger or consolidation cost north of $4 million. So, we're certainly very interested in recovering those costs as much as possible. And these are the things that people just really don't understand. You know, we talk all about this merger and consolidation and it's going to happen and it's a map with colors on it. Wow, you go through it a couple of times and you recognize that it's a very complicated and also very expensive endeavor. Lisa, what would be good to add to that? You'll have a moment to think of that, come up on the microphone.
I really don't have much to add to what Brian said. I, I think when we went to our first rate meeting, we provided a lot of information during that meeting to Mercer to consider when they set our rate. And when they proposed the rate back, and again, it's more complicated this year, as Brian was saying, because we're lending in eight, eight other counties. But we have provided some more information. I think they're taking it under consideration, so we don't have the final rate back yet. One of the things that happens, the rate that they proposed was a decrease of 1.2%. But even with the rate increase, the service revenue will probably increase about four and a half million because the number of Medicaid eligibles is going up. One of the things, you know, it's really hard to project is how much more service expense will that be on the newly enrolled eligibles? And to me, that's one of the real variables that's hard to nail down. The rate on the surface to us appeared sufficient, even though there was one area that we felt was underfunded, so that's where we provide the information back. Just to wait till we get the new rate, Brian, and then see where we are.
We'll, the bake series and power washers, we'll keep the schedule for those. For all of you that volunteered for that, just can pay it on the split. Oh, shoot me up, Pat.
So those, those Medicaid eligible numbers, when, when did they, I mean, were those acted through a certain time period? In other words, where do they look at the Medicaid eligible numbers? Because, you know, we keep getting more and more of the ACA enrollment and all of that.
Yeah, and the fact that Medicaid, I think, that January, because a lot of them came on January, still or having trouble with NCTRAC, so exactly who we're paying for and whatever, actually, the number of colleges are. Because we did have a rate adjustment also on January 1st, and now we're going to have it tomorrow.
This is, just giving you an example of one really had situation with the rates where, as Michael mentioned, with the woodwork effect, you know, all the attention paid to the healthcare changes, Obamacare, all, all the things you see in the news and, you know, people have realized that they may be eligible for Medicaid and never knew that before. And in that application process, you know, there's an increase in the number of Medicaid-eligible people that just didn't know before, and it's referred to as the woodwork effect. The Mercer and the state believe that although we will have additional people with Medicaid, that their profile will have a, a lower utilization pattern. So even though the number of people increased, they actually reduced our rate in relationship to the projections around that population. Does that make sense to you?
Well, it's crystal ball.
Yeah. Well, we did have a lot of discussion around that one, Michael. That's, you know, and that's considered, you know, I mean, that's just part of the, one of the features that are introduced that affects our rate and, you know, it's, changes in the number of people who are eligible for Medicaid have a dramatic effect on how much money we receive because, again, that's the multiplier. So, if you like to think about the chaos that, you know, you're, well, you don't have to experience too much of this Casey fortune problem with NC Trax and NC Fast. We really can't reconcile how many people we should be paid for and who we're being paid for. You can imagine that. Okay? Because of the difficulties in NC Trax. And it's a, it's a disaster. I mean, if the DSS folks in here probably, they got bags under their eyes, don't know why, I mean, they're trying to figure out how to deal with any enrollment problems. And there's just, there's terrible stories about people that don't get services because their Medicaid eligibility is screwed up. I don't, I mean, just a simple way to put it. Well, on, on, that, that's a major need problem.
I was just wondering for the NC Trax, there's a question about those NC Trax.
I'll, I'll be too critical, I explain.
NC Trax is the state's new billing system for Medicaid and other funding streams that went into place July 1st. So, all Medicaid services, except for those built at MCOs and the manual health and such as abuse and IDD, get billed directly to NC Trax. So, there've been eligibility and payment issues with NC Trax. I'm sure you've seen the paper, but it's really the state's new billing system, new and improved billing system.
Now, we, now our providers, we get just a kind of a educational opportunity here. Our providers are not paid through that system. They're paid from us, okay? We're, we're the Medicaid, we're the Medicaid bank. We receive Medicaid funds and we reimburse providers for the services they deliver. So they're fortunately not dependent on that system to be reimbursed. Other providers of Medicaid services outside our benefits are, however. The, the big problems we run into though have to do with whether a person is eligible for Medicaid or not. Okay? And then, you know, how we treat them and how they're paid for, and it just kind of goes on from there. And then, of course, again, the PMPM, the number of, of individuals each month that are the, the multipliers for our rate payment. So, if you read those headlines about how it's all working great, you might challenge that opinion. Advantage point. We have Dr. Craig Hummel this evening. Dr. Craig Hummel, he's a medical director at Cardly, not my brain. We had a conversation about him this morning. Maybe Dr. Craig Martin, their medical director, another great time. Medical, we got this guy from. Again, trying to take advantage of talking about what Smokey does, what a medical, what does a medical director do in a managed, a public managed care organization? You know, why do we have a doctor working for us? And then how does that relate to, you know, our individual members and families and what are, you know, how do you draw that string all the way out to, you know, John Go out on the street? If you can do that, you're doing a good job.
I'm going to do my darndest, okay? So, yeah, I'm the other Craig. We've got a couple of Crays in the system. And actually, Dr. Hummel's been very helpful in orienting me to the system of care here. He's with the Cardrations and was kind of on the early curve about what works and what doesn't work in LME and MCOs. So I really appreciate the chance to share with you a little bit about my role at Smokey Mountain Center. I'm going to hand out, if you haven't gotten already, an organizational chart and make some references to that a little bit. Should be coming around there. And first of all, I guess on behalf of everybody, want to thank you as the board for what you do. You'll notice that you're at the top of the chart and we never forget that. Also want to say something about the expertise of both Brian and Christina in helping us manage and shape what we've been doing. I think that's helped us, I think really been the key to us staying on focus about what we want to do and achieve the natural results. We're the, as Brian's already said, the only LME, MCO in the state that's accomplished a successful large consolidation over the past six months. And with the Western Partnership actions going on right now, we're also involved in the opportunities for standardization and improvement. So as your chief medical officer, my role is to support our operations and achieve the best results possible while adhering to regulatory requirements and best clinical practices. As a psychiatrist, I started out with a plan of becoming a family doc or a pediatrician. Actually, I have a daughter who's a pediatrician, so I passed that on to the next generation. But I always try to see the whole person, not only who they are, but who they want to become. Healthcare, as you know, in the United States for a variety of reasons is, a lot of it's reimbursement-based. It's become very disease-focused. And because of that, we kind of miss the audience, in my opinion. Sir William Osler was a Canadian physician. He was one of the four founding fathers of Johns Hopkins School of Medicine. And decades ago, he wrote, "It is more important to know the person who has the disease than the disease who has the person." I think that really echoes the comments that Dr. Heck made earlier. I didn't check with him on this, but there was a geriatric physician who liked to talk about a patient that he saw and the patient came in and said, "Doc, my knees are hurting." And the doc says, "Well, which one?" He says, "Well, it's the left one. It's not the right one, it's for the left one." He says, "Well, you know, you've got an 80-year-old knee." And the patient said, "But Doc, my other knee's 80-years-old as well." So, you know, we have to kind of be honest about this and figure out that there are sometimes things going on that impact on the perception of pain or the perception of quality of life. For Smokey Mountain Center, my primary responsibility is to support provision of the highest quality of care to the largest number of people with the best outcomes possible. And that, of course, is based on deployment of our very precious resources. So I'm not going to talk too much about that upper line of public planning affairs by answer, IT and legal tonight. I'm going to talk about the service provided by senior directors and sort of how you can come base with that and maybe sprinkle in a couple of little stories along the way. For those of you who are wondering how long this is going to go on, knowing that I'm a psychiatrist and thinking this is going to be a 50-minute, hour, I would like to reassure you, I have about 12 minutes until 6:00 right now. And I plan to spend no more time with you than a psychiatrist would in an inpatient consult at Mission Hospital, so. So that'd be at least 10 or 15 minutes, but probably another 10 minutes, sorry. One of the things I do with Julie Sinclair, who's sitting over at the end in turquoise, is co-chair the Quality Improvement Committee. Julie's our senior director of Julie's our senior director of Quality and Integrity Operations. Last year, I helped lead a project with our regional behavioral healthcare medical directors where we reviewed treatment records of people who have serious or persistent mental illness. We wanted to look at those records and assess the level of care integration. I can honestly say, I think that was the first time those doctors have ever done that in the years they've worked with their organization. We looked at a lot of things, and on the good side, we saw that people were being monitored for medication side effects, and they were being informed of risk benefit issues. But on the opportunities for improvement side, we saw areas where there could be improved collaboration on primary care, there could be more education on Smokey cessation, weight reduction, and monitoring laboratory indicators of diabetes and heart disease. As a result of that, and with our endorsement of best practices for providers in our network, I think we've made some headway. Another area within quality improvement is reviewing grievances and critical incidents that occur whenever there's an urgent health or safety concern, this team that operates under you that would give me a call immediately to take appropriate action. And that's kind of under the principle of where there's smoke, there could be fire. We want to make sure that we pick up on indicators early and keep our network safe for everybody. I don't see Rhonda here tonight, is she missing, I guess? She's our senior director of care coordination. And with Rhonda, what we've done is to develop a system for medical director consults. So if consumers or families are finding that they're not making the progress they hope for, or sad to say, they're losing rather than gaining ground, we can get together and look at what we can do to help with their journey. And I must say, it's not just a Rhonda thing, Christina's been on the phone weekends as well, where we've tried to put in place for kids who've been abandoned, or wrap our services around a consumer who's stuck in an ED while they're waiting for life-saving treatment. You know, we have this kind of curious system in North Carolina, for those of you who don't know about it, that sometimes hospitals will keep a person in an emergency department who has a behavioral health condition, even though they have an inpatient behavioral healthcare program. And there's a variety of reasons why they do that. But what they have learned is that they go ahead and admit the patient to their unit, it gets them on the B waiting list instead of the A waiting list for Broad State Hospital. So when I first came here, I did a quality improvement consult at a hospital, it actually had somebody who waited so long in the emergency department awaiting psychiatric treatment. He'd got deep vein thrombosis, he got blood clots in his lungs from inactivity, and had to be admitted to an ICU. We don't want to see that kind of stuff ever happen again. With Jenny Q, who is our senior director of community collaboration, Jenny and I traveled from Murphy to Boone to Hickory to meet with multiple stakeholders on a monthly basis. First of all, you have to agree what issue you want to measure, right? You can't really change unless you have some baseline data. And then monitor our progress in helping people get the services they need at the right level of care, rather than feeling that the only thing they can do is go to the ED. Of course, we all know that ultimate success with that is going to depend on more facility-based crisis programs, the walk-in centers in our region, as well as sort of a change in the culture about where you go for help. Jenny's team has brought IBC training to our communities, she's doubled the training of law enforcement and EMS staff and principles of crisis intervention. And I would have to say that Jenny and I probably have spent more time in the car and more miles together than I have with all of my family members combined. Sean Jones is new to the team, he oversees provider network and credentialing activities. Every month, we review the practitioners, as Brian was saying, that come into our network to make sure that they're licensed, that they have excellent standards of skill and competence. And now we're kind of looking at where are the gaps in the service network, and what we need to bring on board to have more effective treatment programs. Carla Pivers, who is not here this evening either, is our senior director for customer services. She ensures with her team that when somebody calls our access number, they're going to get excellent service. I did a training for them last month on how to identify certain psychotropic medications, and learned a lot about what we do and what we don't do in our network that will help us improve going forward. Her staff is available to get their call 24/7, and they do. Dr. Tony Sheila, who is our senior director of clinical operations, manages clinical staff that look at service authorization requests. That's where if you want something, or your professional therapist or doctor thinks you need a service, you submit a request for that. So there's a whole process that we'll get to properly down the road in the next year as we continue these discussions about what you have to do to review that. One of the things that we try to do is have a consulting process where we can help support the shaping of the network. So our practice patterns, what we do is in accordance with not just service definitions, you know, the things the state says, but also what we know are evidence-based practices that are nationwide. And those are all posted on our website. There are many stories I could share about this, but when we went live as an MCO, we started to take over managing the care of people who've usually been managed by value options. We found one young man who was almost 16, who had spent over two and a half years in an out-of-state psychiatric residential treatment program. Two and a half years. Within three months, we had a plan for him to return to the community, and I'm happy to report he had Christmas dinner with his family. Today, I work with Nancy Ford, she's our senior director of human resources. She helps coordinate all of the, not just human resource, but also physical resources for us, and we actually interviewed a doctor today who may help us out a little bit. I'm going to take about three more minutes, and then we'll be done. Back in the 1980s, I was teaching child psychiatry to residents at Johns Hopkins, and I had an opportunity to see some of the changes that occurred, you know, a couple decades ago in healthcare. The good thing, I think, with the institutionalization and focus on recovery, is that there was a plan to transfer resources into the community. But we all kind of know what happened, that promise wasn't fully realized. And instead, we sort of saw an overuse of medications, and in my opinion, kind of an underuse of common sense. I mean, what are the things you need to do to stay healthy? Well, you don't overeat, you don't smoke, you try to take care of yourself. But then that got aligned as, as you well know, over a section of 2009 and 2012, about $4.3 billion was taken out state budgets for people with serious persistent mental illness. So that's kind of what we're dealing with right now. Back in 1955, there was one psychiatry bed for every 300 Americans. That was probably a little bit too much. Today, for state hospital beds, there's one psychiatry bed for every 3,000 Americans. That's why people stay stuck in the ED. And when you look at that, where North Carolina is, is that we rank number 44 in availability of psychiatry beds, number 44. So what do we want to do, what do I want to do at the time that I have with you and with Smokey Mountain Center? Well, we want to improve the health of our communities, both for those who come to us for care, as well as those who don't show up at the door. And what I worry about, we don't put enough into primary and secondary prevention, it's too late to wait when somebody has a crisis, you want to prevent the crisis. We want to improve the perception of care for our consumers and, you know, the achieved actual outcomes. And sometimes what a person perceives and what an actual outcome is, those two may not always be in alignment, so we probably need to do a better job of education on that. In my experience, sometimes people come seeking charity and compassion, and that doesn't always fit very well into a medical necessity model of resource distribution. And I guess the last thing I think we want to do is reduce the per capita cost per care, not because we want to make a profit on the backs of people, but we want to back up people at their communities to become all that they can be with reinvestment at the local level. You know, the United States spends more than any other country on healthcare, about $8,000 a person. So what do we get for that? Four out of 10 adults in the United States don't see a doctor or take deeter medicine when they're sick. That compares with 1 out of 20 in other countries. So four out of 10 versus 1 out of 20. We fall short in access, affordability, and quality. But despite these many challenges, I am hopeful about the future. I think we need to stay close to our communities, provide services that make a difference in people's lives. And I believe that by continuing to partner with those who have lived experience, and help them, and help us fight each day to make each day a better day than it was before. As they say in the song, "We shall have to work out," so thank you very much.
You said one for bed free, one bed, side bed for every 3,000 side patients?
That's what I said, yes.
Is that in North Carolina?
That's nationwide, North Carolina, of course. But that's, but that's the reason why we have that at the EDs, because people need a place to go, but there's no place for them to go. They have special needs, they're older, they have intellectual development disabilities, they're children. We have no trial in patient beds in our whole region.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Well, we do, or...
They all are.
We have a few more items tonight, just to, we have that before on our consent agenda. We have two items on our consent agenda, it's not one of them, but Tracy's going to tell you what those are, so have a good Tracy.
I apologize if that was not clear from the agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda, and these are standing items that would come before you fairly often, the operations that you led to court for February 2014, which is included in your materials, and the DHHS monthly MCO award that was submitted this month. So those are all the items on our consent agenda submitted for your consideration.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
We got a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We got a few seconds. We're already in the second, but... Any discussion, all in favor, would you like to say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Other business? Any who have any other business? I'm sure, just checking. I would like to welcome Shelley Forman back, it's good to see you, Shelley. The next item we have is what you've all been waiting for, closed session. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, to consult with the attorneys in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege concerning matters in litigation and to prevent the disclosure of information that's privileged or confidential pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 122C, 126.1, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes. Is there a motion to go on closed session? You vote with a motion, is there a second?
There's two seconds, okay, Larry Cox and Nancy, also a motion.
All in favor of going to closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Are we going to move on closed session?
Okay, we are back in open session. We're back in open session.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to take a motion that we established in the meeting to develop a response to the Medicaid reform plan, with that committee, assisted by Dr. Day, care of our attorney, and also Randy Stone, remember, also there were the, and that's a motion.
Is there a second? I'll say it. Larry Cox, second. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Motion passes. And is there a motion for adjournment? If you have others, I'll say adjournment, second. Thank you, second motion. Any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourned, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dinner is outside.